Well, I call to order the December 7th, 2021 City Council Work Study Session to order. Now, for the record, I note that all the members of the council and the charter officers are present. The work-study session is less formal, and it's an opportunity for a presentation to be made by the staff on the agendized item, which in this case deals with the examination of the Old Town Scottsdale Character Area Plan. The work-study is intended as a less formal method to draw out our open discussion about the topic that is agendized. We also have the opportunity for the public to ask questions or make comments in the work-study, and typically we have five in a work-study presentation. So, we will expedite things by having the presentation. There is no formal vote taken during a work-study, and it's really a good time to review the topic fully. At this time, we will get the, have the presentation on the topic of the Old Town Scottsdale Character Area Plan. Go ahead, Aaron. Thank you. Adam, excuse me.
My name is Adam Yaron. I'm a principal planner with Long Range Planning. My counterparts at this process is Brad Carr, who was unable to make it this evening. However, we have Brian Clough here, also from Current Planning, as his proxy should we have any questions this evening. With respect to the Old Town Scottsdale Character Area Plan and Zoning Ordinance Update, to provide some background, this was a city council-initiated item that started back in August. City council at that time initiated an update to the 2018 Old Town Scottsdale Character Area Plan, a text amendment to affected areas of our zoning ordinance within the downtown, downtown overlay and PBD zoning districts, as well as other affected sections as applicable, an amendment to the downtown infill incentive district, and directives to staff to update the Old Town Scottsdale Urban Design and Architectural Guidelines as necessary upon the completion of items A, B, and C as listed on the screen. In terms of the project timeline, as I stated, this process started back in August with an initiation. Since then, we've had work-study session and non-action meetings with both City Council and Planning Commission. Through the months of October to December, we've had six open houses on October 18th, 25th, and November 15th, based on council direction. We've had virtual open houses available online on our project webpage that were posted on October 26th and remain ongoing. And so this evening, we'll have a work-study session to report our citizen input report findings received to date. We'll also be presenting to Planning Commission on the 15th in a similar fashion, and then we'll come back before both City Council and Planning Commission for a work-study session and non-action meeting ahead of a possible recommendation and adoption hearing in March of 2022. In terms of the update considerations, these were requested by City Council and discussed with the public. Update considerations to those items for our Old Town Character Area Plan and Zoning Ordinance would be the vision and values for the Old Town Scottsdale Character Area Plan, the provision of quality new development and redevelopment, development types, designations, locations, and transitions focusing on height, density, and intensity of development, their transitions, and where they, where those locations are mapped within the plan, the use of development flexibility in the application of amending setbacks and stepbacks, the provision of interconnected public open space, including streetscapes, landscaping, and amenity areas with trees and shade, zoning ordinance-based development standards and where those base development standards could be maximized through bonus provisions, and finally zoning ordinance bonus provisions as to whether or not they be maintained, provide greater and better defined public benefits, and a reexamination of the bonus payment calculations. Now, with respect to our public outreach to date, we've had a variety of different ways in which we've tried to engage the public. Most prominently, we've had direct mailing to more than 2,500 property owners. That is, all properties within our Old Town boundary. We've also noticed through a variety of email and print locations provided on screen to more than 140,000 different ways in which we've tried to engage the public. Additionally, we've reached out directly to community groups to engage their membership in our public outreach efforts through COGS, SCOT, Experian Scottsdale, Scottsdale Chamber of Commerce, Scottsdale Association of Realtors, and Scottsdale Leadership. In terms of public participation opportunities, as I stated, we had in-person open house events that focused on specifically development types and development flexibility. I know all of City Council had made it to one of those live sessions, so thank you for doing so. We did offer to the public nine open house events, but based on registration and ultimately the participation, we've had six total events occurred on October 18th, 25th, and November 15th. We had 117 total participants out of 167 folks that registered. And in terms of self-guided online open houses that focus differently on visioning, open space, and quality of design, this has been live, as I stated, on our project webpage since October 26th and remains ongoing to date. Within your report, it was originally cited that we had six participants reported, however, that was at the time of publishing of the report that you had, and so we had three additional participants on those self-guided open houses. As we'll, as we'll get to the end of the presentation, I'll focus on what we're going to be doing to try and enhance those public outreach responses and what our approach is going to be moving forward. But to provide some background on those in-person open house events and where folks came from, we had 117 total participants. Forty-three percent came from outside of Old Town, as Old Town boundary. Old Town business owners represented 25% of total participants. Fifteen percent of total participants were Old Town property owners, and seven percent were Old Town residents. Notably, 10% were participants that provided addresses outside of Old Town, and so those stakeholder interests were not mapped on the screen, but this is to give you some idea of the spectrum of participation that we had at those in-person events. As we'll now discuss those public input received and what, where we might make those possible adjustments if we wanted to respond to the public input, we would be focusing on our Old Town Scottsdale Character Area Plan, our zoning ordinance, our downtown infill incentive plan, and our Old Town Scottsdale Urban Design and Architectural Guidelines. You'll see on the next slide references to where staff has noted where we could respond to what we'll be presenting on screen, and so I'll just make note of that as we go through the PowerPoints. In terms of the quality of new development and redevelopment, what we heard is that quality development remains a priority for the community, but specifically for Old Town, focusing on building setbacks, open space, street spaces, and street space continuity as a means to enhance the pedestrian environment. There was also continued support for quality design within the surrounding context. In this effort, if we were to respond to the public input received, we could bring forward possible amendments to our zoning ordinance and urban design and architectural guidelines. In terms of development types, designations, their locations, and transitions, what we heard was support for development types to guide the development and their respective locations. Downtown Core and Historic Old Town, those areas shown in green on the right side portion of the map as Downtown Core, and then in green but bounded by a yellow and black line, Historic Old Town are important areas that should not be changed based on public input received. There was also sentiment to provide more transitions between development types, especially adjacent to the type 1 development types, or where we have a hierarchy of type 3 adjacent to type 1. There was community sentiment to ensure that there was meaningful transitions in those areas. There was also interest in removing the type 2.5 development type expressed by participation received. In this effort, if we were to amend, or respond rather to public input received, we would be bringing amendments to our Old Town Scottsdale Character Area Plan, zoning ordinance, and urban design and architectural guidelines. With respect to development flexibility, what we heard was continued support for development flexibility in general. There was continued support of public benefits as a trade-off for development flexibility, and there was, as well as support for reassessment of those public benefits, to ensure that the trade-off of bonuses are equal to the public benefits received. Finally, with respect to PBDs or planned block development applications, there was a desire from the community that this should only include contiguous parcels, so as to represent what that statement means. As an example, a contiguous PBD is represented on the left graphic here, shown with an orange of the museum square application, where in this instance, the site in its entirety is only separated by a half-street, and the zoning boundaries would essentially touch each other, whereas you have in comparison the non-contiguous PBD of Scottsdale Collection that is much further separated in its entirety and not adjacent or contiguous in its full development site as well. In terms of the provision of interconnected public open space, what we heard was continued support for open space as an amenity in Old Town, which should be a priority of redevelopment efforts, particularly when bonus provisions are sought. In this instance, again, amendments would be brought forward to our Old Town Scottsdale Character Area Plan and Zoning Ordinance if we were to respond to what we heard on this item. With respect to transportation, infrastructure, sustainability, tourism, and economic development as a background for City Council to consider, there was a work-study session on this item back in late September, where there was consensus from council to analyze benefits and costs of development, infrastructure needs and impact fees, to determine if the city is being reimbursed sufficiently, implements a consistent structure for fees, and continues to be flexible in adjusting the fee schedule. City council will address this item through public work-study sessions in early 2022, and so there wasn't an express desire from council to continue discussion on this item with respect to the Old Town Scottsdale Character Area Plan and Zoning Ordinance Update. With respect to the downtown or Old Town naming convention, at that same work-study session in late September, there was expressed consensus to retain the name of Old Town. We do note on this item possible updates to our zoning ordinance, as there's still some old references to downtown and not Old Town, and so that remains an item in which we believe there could be some improvement on this, based on council direction. In terms of zoning ordinance-based development standards and bonus provisions, what we heard was support for current base building height maximums, providing more transitions between development types, especially building transitions again from type 1 to the greatest intensity of development types of type 3, maintaining character of the downtown core and historic Old Town. There was varying support for existing bonus height standards. Some expressed that current bonus maximum heights are too tall, while others supported existing achievable bonus heights are, could be appropriate. There was support for open space at the street and pedestrian level as an expected benefit. And Old Town property owners did voice concern about any reduction in current bonus or base development standards that could limit their redevelopment potential. With respect to the current base height maximum heights and bonus height maximums, just provided on screen, is what you all saw in those public outreach meetings that we had, is just kind of an evolution showing on the furthest left, left side of the graphic where we were when the original downtown plan came into effect and where we are today. So with respect to base height maximums, you see an incremental change in height over time from 1984 to 2018, stratifying now out a new typology of type 2.5, and then, and maintaining the same heights that were amended to in 2012. With respect to the current bonus maximum heights, you see a greater change over time, certainly more so over the original downtown plan of 1984, but you see the maintained maximum heights being the same essentially between type 2 and areas of what's now type 3 in the 2018 plan, now in expanded areas where you could achieve a greater maximum predicated on a developer amassing a land area that would justify such a request and for council to consider such. With respect to bonus provisions in terms of maintaining, providing greater and better defined public benefits, reexamining bonus payment calculations, what we heard was continued support for public benefit as a trade-off for bonus development standards, favoring benefits of public open space, major infrastructure improvements, and pedestrian amenities. Current public improvements listed within the zoning ordinance, as we've fielded from members of the public, was too generalized, and there was some support for adding new listed benefits such as contributions to public safety, renewable energy, and elevated quality design. With respect to the downtown infill incentive plan, the background on this item is that City Council removed references to the infill incentive district in the newly ratified Scottsdale General Plan 2035. However, this plan remains a redevelopment tool for the city and allows for development standard amendments, fee waivers, and other applicant requests. In terms of our next steps in our public participation process, this evening, as represented on screen is our, is our work-study session, we're going to be going to Planning Commission on the 15th to have a similar reporting of public input received. We'll have ongoing self-guided online open houses available online at scottsdaleaz.gov, keyword "Old Town Updates." We'll also be having more focus group events and community group meetings based on what we heard from City Council at a couple work-study sessions ago about perhaps taking government to the people and really meeting with their membership on, on items that still would dictate additional public input. And we'll be coming back to both Planning Commission and City Council later on in January and February, and then before Planning Commission for possible recommendation ahead of a possible adoption hearing by City Council in March of 2022. That completes staff's presentation. We're available to answer any questions and certainly allow for council discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this point, what I'd like to do is open for public comment, and then, of course, we could have questions from the council itself. Let's start with, we have five in person. Don Henninger and Marilyn Atkinson.
Mayor Ortega, Vice Mayor Caputi, members of council. I'm Don Henninger, 8202 East Del Camino Drive. I'm also with SCOT, the Scottsdale Coalition of Today and Tomorrow. And thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I'll be brief. I know we're early in the process, and there's a lot more work to be done. And I really appreciate you reaching out to the public for comment on this plan. My hope is that you'll continue to cast a wide net and hear from as many people as you possibly can. The vast majority of Scottsdale residents like the direction in which the city is headed. They're happy. They're also quiet, and their voices often are not heard. I hope you look for ways to engage even more of them in this process to really understand what residents want. I really appreciate the hard work the staff did to get feedback from 117 people. There's a lot of hard work and effort that went into that, but let's remember, there's well over 250,000 people who live in Scottsdale, so we really can cast a wider net, I hope, to hear from more. The future of downtown is critical, and the ongoing evolution of its growth is vital to the prosperity of the city. And one word keeps coming up in the conversations that I have with people, and that word is flexibility, and we heard Adam mention that as well in his report. As you consider updates to the plan, I hope you will keep in mind that there's a risk in turning back the clock and putting blanket restrictions on the kind of growth and development we want to consider for the city. The risk is that you turn off the spigot of possibilities, of creative, innovative projects that will never see the light of day if you implement rules and restrictions that deter investors from even considering Scottsdale as a place they want to invest in. A healthy city has to continue to attract investors who bring their best work forward, which we've always required and have always received in Scottsdale. We should not put the city in a position that discourages investors from even considering Scottsdale as the city where they want to invest in. Downtown Scottsdale is the economic heartbeat over the city. Let's not close and lock the door for potential creative, quality possibilities that continue to keep the city prosperous and healthy. Let's not cut off our nose despite our face. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Marilyn Atkinson. And then French Thompson.
Hi, I'm Marilyn Atkinson. Good evening, mayor and staff and council members. I want to talk tonight a little about the bonus point system. It's a little bit unclear when we were at the Old Town Character Area Plan study, and it was a little confusing as to what exactly is in the bonus plans. For example, if you have an art bonus, within that art bonus, do you have parking that can be given? Do you have any type of height that can be given in exchange for it? So, it would be nice at the next meeting that they have for the downtown group, that those are clearly defined, and they should be defined. Can parking be reused in each area and total up? It's, it's very unclear. So, that was one thing that kind of bothered me. I think it's very important to keep the downtown special, and especially the Old Town and Historic Old Town. We have now on the, the plan where the building is supposed to transition down a little bit to meet the lower height, at least that was and did exist. We also incorporated at some point that they pick up some of the design elements from the older areas. It's important to have recessed windows, setbacks and stepbacks. Is that, how do you get that in the, in a bonus point? Does that give you more height? And I think for the best reason for Scottsdale is to keep, is to keep it nice. So, that's, I think we want to keep it special, and this, these workshops are helping to let the voices be heard of those of us who own property and are merchants and have been merchants, and we just really hope that the council listens, because this 150 feet is just not suitable or appropriate for down there. So that's my comments, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, French Thompson and Daniel Isak.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Caputi, council members. I've got a lot to say. First off, I'd just like to have a minute of silence for the potential death of the Old Town as we know it. So, in about a minute, a really loud bell is going to ring, tells me I've got one minute left. I do have a lot to say. I just want to remind all of you that when Southbridge came for, Southbridge 2 came for a referendum to a vote for the city of Scottsdale, for the citizens to vote for the poster child of density and height, it was pulled because they didn't want that vote to happen. They didn't want anybody to see how many citizens were voting against height and density. It's this city council and this city staff that have the ability to be able to keep the downtown alive, Old Town alive. I don't see any reason to add bonus height to any of this stuff or density. There isn't any reason for it. I see all sorts of development all over this entire valley that doesn't have the height, and it doesn't have the density. Most of the citizens that live here in Scottsdale didn't move here to be in an urban city. There's that bell I like. They really, they didn't live here, they didn't move here for that. I didn't move here for that. I don't think these citizens, if you gave them the chance to vote, do they want height? Do they want density? They want more congestion? They want more Heat Island stuff? If it was my power, I'd bring that to the city vote, literally citywide. There's no reason for added height bonuses. There's no reason for more density per acreage. This has been a thing that's going on with people in the background, developers, real estate people. Oh, by the way, I thought I'd tell you, I don't really appreciate outside real estate people coming in and threatening our city with lawsuits, we don't do what they want. So I just want to tell you, I don't appreciate that. So I hope they're listening and don't come back in and start threatening our city if we don't do the height and density that they want to make money. Thank you.
Daniel Isak, and then John Rosenberg.
Good evening. I'm Dan Isaac, 13530 East Donox Court. I want to thank the mayor, the city council, and the city staff for actually allowing the public to provide input on this important matter. I attended one of the sessions, and what struck me most was that while there was some concern with overdevelopment, the vast majority of comments that I heard were in support of flexibility and using leverage to ensure that developers contribute to the cost of infrastructure and future improvements desired by the city, such as more green space, roads, bike trails, et cetera. One thing that concerns me is that any short-term focus on putting additional restrictions on development ignores two facts that are indisputable. First, the city, and in fact, the entire valley, is in a desperate shortage of housing, whether it's houses, condominiums, or apartments, especially affordable housing for teachers, healthcare workers, or public safety personnel. Second, the city will need increased revenues, not only to add to the services that this great city provides, but to upgrade, repair, and replace existing infrastructure as it ages. The council recently worked collectively to allow development of the Miller. That work showed how collaboration led to an aesthetically pleasant design, improvement at the street level for pedestrians, and some units reserved for those working in the city. Yes, we need to preserve the historic part of Old Town, but much of what is designated Old Town is not historic, and includes areas necessary to address housing needs and future revenue sources. The character plan is not something that should be completely rewritten just because a new administration comes into power. Yes, it should be tweaked, but a different vision than the past several administrations does not warrant throwing out something that has served the city very well. If anything, it needs to be liberalized to address the reality that Scottsdale is not accessible to many of those who work here or those who visit us, and the city's revenue demands will only be increasing. Let's do what we can to limit short-term rentals, prevent designs that don't fit in with the community or the surrounding areas, veto buildings without reasonable setbacks, and so forth. But let's encourage thoughtful development and redevelopment in this city. It is crucial to ensure that our city continues to thrive. Thank you.
Okay, last comment on John Rosenberg.
Thank you, vice mayor. Thank you, council. My name is John Rosenberg. I'm a longtime Scottsdale resident, and I'm a longtime Scottsdale business owner. My address is on record. I co-founded LeVros Commercial Real Estate almost 30 years ago. Clearly, I was like 10 at the time, so, and I co-founded Mode Property Management 14 years ago. I want to start by saying I'm not a developer. I'm an entrepreneur whose firm and team has helped hundreds of businesses and other entrepreneurs buy, sell, lease, and manage buildings in Old Town over these past 30 years. I've been fortunate enough to be able to purchase the buildings now occupied by my firms, and I've been able to purchase several other, other buildings in Old Town over the years. These are big investments for me, and as you can imagine, these buildings were not immune to the struggles that most buildings faced through the downturns, including the Great Recession. We, like most building owners, struggled. We spent money we didn't have, and we pushed through those difficult times so that we could continue to maintain these properties and provide comfortable office and retail spaces for dozens of other businesses. I don't know if I'll ever want to develop or redevelop these properties. I'm not a developer, as I said. I don't know if anybody else will ever want to redevelop. I don't know if anybody else will ever want to redevelop these properties if I ever sold, which isn't anytime soon. But I trust that if I or someone tried to redevelop these properties, the current system of staff review, development review, planning commission, necessary neighborhood outreach and ultimately council approval is already in place to ensure that it is done properly, meaning the current system works. Here's what I do know. I do know there's over 550 office and retail properties in Old Town. I know that many of these properties are owned by businesses that occupy them, they're owned by the businesses that occupy them, and it's quite possibly the largest and most important investment that that entrepreneur holds. I know that almost 70% of these properties are at least 40 years old. I know that the IRS only allows commercial depreciation of 39 years, basically saying that this is when buildings start to become functionally obsolete. I know that my page is turned upside down. I know the reality is that many of these buildings will require some, if not a lot of upgrades, in order to be maintained for many more years. I also know that while there are, there are certainly many important historic properties to be protected, the majority of the other properties are not only not historic, but they're old, dated and in many cases, functionally obsolete. Lastly, I know the property values are currently at or near all-time highs, yet if the city decides to move towards a down zoning, you will be taking value away from these properties. You'll be hurting these business owners and entrepreneurs with their largest and most important investments. And ironically, these are the individuals who just want to run a business, just want to improve their buildings and improve the area. Why would you punish them? We need to leave the current character area plan in place. The system that we currently have works. Thank you.
Okay, we are concluded on public testimony. At this point, I want to clarify and then we can have some discussion and comments. What we're doing is we're testing. We have the results of the first test of questions in the public realm and then we have some feedback on those that are in our discussion today. We do not have action of any ordinance change, but we do have a good faith discussion about whether or not the current plan is functional and whether or not it, how it could be modified with future other questions in the community. So staff is waiting for more input from us. I am ready to list several things that I think should be considered. Some of them are redundant from our May discussion and I would like to proceed with some of those points that initiated this reexamination of the Old Town Character Area Plan. So the questions that we're bringing forth and any consensus that we have will be openly discussed here and, and then it will be tested by staff as they outline. The major responses that I've seen are that there is an inherent flaw or conflict when a type one is placed next to a type three. This is a matter I brought up back in May and it is illustrative of the flaw between what was presented in the, both the architectural guidelines and the setback criteria and so forth. So the plan said, let's do a type one, do a type two, do a type three, but it's not mapped that way. And in many cases, that becomes, I call it flawed. And that's a basis of some of the discussion of all these extremes that we're going to. So when you put a type one 40 footer next to a type three 160 foot or 150 foot, it's pretty glaring. It agitates the public and it's been cause for grave concern by all, by our city. So when I, when I talk about height and density, as we've spoken, I think our council has, and I have some legitimate concerns about height, density, mapping, and then a third issue about mixed use. So the, in terms of going over those four basic items, the, as discussed, the current zoning is C1 or C2 or C3 entitled for 36 feet with a DO overlay. Now, that's where any rezoning in the future is going to be modifying that base zoning. The situation is that, and I want to be very clear about this, that whatever action was taken by the previous council, whatever entitlements were granted and through this body two years ago or prior, they're in effect. That is not changed in our discussions or decisions. Also, the discussion is within this original downtown area. There's other issues about PUD, mixed use outside of this area. There are other growth areas and medium growth areas and so forth. So the questions that we have are how can we put forward some issues to be tested? Does it mean that all of those C3 areas wanted to build C3 to 150 feet? No. So in regard to whether or not a business decision's made for going up and exceeding some, some height is applicable. Of course, there's a range of size of properties to do so. The other thing that has changed since we initiated this in May is in May, the city council voted a new parking ordinance. And the parking ordinance is citywide and we can review those details, but the parking ordinance applies to mixed use and it talked about mixed use. And it applies in the downtown area, not just outside under a PUD or a PBD, Planned Block Development, in Old Town. That is an overriding criteria that started to set the stage and a definition for mixed use. The mixed use elements, as we know them, got modified by the general plan. So the general plan, what changed between May and today is that general plan, of course, got digested, processed and brought forward. And that general plan has specifically other elements to it or, excuse me, ranges of percentages. We have to realize again, the general plan 2001 was so obsolete, it showed the 101 as a conceptual, wasn't even built then, right? And 2001 general plan was so obsolete and the new one that's been adopted 20 years later actually shows the 101. And that is a very distinctive difference in the updating. So one of the things that I requested, because height and density are related, is I asked for the percentages of the land use citywide. It's all balanced with residential, mixed use, multi-use and commercial, institutional, et cetera. I hope we can get that up on the screen in a little while because I did ask for it to be part of the presentation. Another, here you can see the different land uses, again, when they were discussed through the process and this council then put forward the mapping and it was approved by the, by the citizens. If you look down into the non-residential column, that's listed to the left, and the center itemized item says commercial. Commercial shows 1%. 1% of the land area in Scottsdale is commercial. We would describe that as C1, C2 or CO in our zoning. And if we relate to that number, you see what the burden is and how important our commercial, our commercial sector is in Scottsdale. Other categories have to do with institutional, you know, parks and educational or other factors. What we have seen in the last five years, maybe even six years, is an erosion of the C1 or, excuse me, the commercial component of our land use. We can't manufacture new C1, C2, C3, but what we've seen on Scottsdale Road is the erasure of C1, C3 property and replacement with bedrooms, apartments. We are slowly becoming a bedroom city with thousands and thousands, apparently about 95, 500 bedrooms and more proposed in our Old Town area. That is the big picture. The big picture is to be sustainable, we need to have as planners and so forth and we need to, I am pushing back because of the height and the density questions and they touched on the other infrastructure questions. Now, the big push, as you also saw in one of the exhibits, was that the bar chart showing where changes have happened, where type two actually got reduced in height between 08, it was, it was 84 feet and it got chopped down to 66 feet. The idea that things can change in categories remade is, is proven that we have to examine those needs. So as we go testing, the other thing that happened in the Old Town, sorry, in the general plan was the definition of high density. High density in the 2001 plan was anything over eight units. Didn't have a cap, didn't have a middle, didn't, it could have been 200 units per acre, but it was anything over eight units. We now have a new definition. High density is 24 units. That's the equivalent of the R5 zoning that we have. But the point that I want to draw here is that true mixed use, whether it occurs in an individual project on a block or wherever it occurs, it's still part of the portfolio of the city's viability. And the scarcity of C1, of our commercial, again, I don't want to, I have to make that point again. So when it comes to density now, we have a high density discussion, which the people voted on before. It was anything over eight units. And at one point, there was a project that called on Bishop Lane that wanted, I believe, 190 units per acre. There was no definition and they tried and maybe they withdrew it as far as I know. We've had other projects coming forward in the 87, 90, 100 units per acre. Those are killer densities that are just way beyond. Even Phoenix doesn't allow GCU to go over 50 units an acre. Those are dorms, right? So it's, it's a critical area that when we talk about height, density and then the mapping errors that I want to point out and these need to be tested. So let me get to the specifics. First of all, on the height, going, I'm suggesting that we test in the community, leaving, well, the type one, there's only one definition for type one area, that green area that's been consistent, that should be at 40 feet. It's going from 36 to 40 feet. That helps you get another height than your retail or whatever you're working with. The second question is for type two, I'm recommending, again, you test, type two would be 52 feet. 52 feet in type two. Some of the information we were getting back said can type 2.5. It's just irregular and it seemed like, forget 2.5, 2.5. And I agree with that. I think it was just made for one particular property to suit them. Finally, the type three. The type three, again, is estimated up to 150 feet. I believe that type three should be 70, oh, excuse me, 66 feet with a bonus of six feet, allowing a top of 72 feet. What is 72 feet? 72 feet is twice 36 feet. We have lived for 50 years with 36 feet and that doesn't mean other buildings haven't built, been built taller. They have. Someone may be able to get an exception and, on a particular project, but if you're looking at 100% increase on the vested 36 feet, you're at 72 feet. What is that comparable to? I mentioned it back in, in May. It's comparable to the Triangle Building. It's comparable to the, well, I voted against it, but the Miller Project. So just to give you an idea, to say that, well, we're going to go 160 feet or 150 feet plus parapets is double or four times the 36 foot allowance. This can and will be tested. It's not outrageous. It has to be tested because it, it would satisfy the type one area. I've designed buildings in this area for 38, almost 40 years. It's certainly doable in type one. Now, on the density, on the density question, what happened in 2018 was that, and by the way, that whole process took less than six months. They started in January in 2018 and they voted on it on September 2nd, sorry, excuse me, July 2nd, July 2nd. Our process has started actually in August. We may be voting on this by May or June. So we're placing a very adequate review of this. Well, why are we doing this? Because there's been a lot of aggravation with these either hypothetical projects or really straining and aggravating, going way beyond the infrastructure questions. Now, we're going to be dealing with the infrastructure. Not one of these height questions adds another lane of traffic to our system and we would be, and type three doubling that. So as we further discuss these issues, we will be looking for a consensus to test these out. The final fourth item has to do with true mixed use. This issue I brought up again back in May. There is no definition under our ordinance at the present time, other than saying it could be residential, commercial, office or hospitality, but there's no mix to preserve some walkability and, and our precious commercial. The commercial 1% is what carries and pays our, our property, excuse me, our, our sales tax revenue, whether it's tourist related or in any way related. It certainly is part of our character downtown restaurants and, and all those other services. So what are we doing? We're trying to find a balance. To say that it should go so overboard and create, from what we've seen, the last four or six or seven projects were so overweighted with residential that they, they killed that other aspect. This is part of the consequences that we're dealing with and I, we have it in our parking ordinance that mixed use, that would be a PUD, would maintain 20% for commercial purposes. So if this starts with 100% commercial and they go four floors, we would expect, or five floors, we'd expect one floor to be commercial, not to just revert commercial property 100% to the other. So that's in the parking ordinance the way it is now and we, as we process this, trying to keep it at a, at a high level so that there's a balance and we don't just roll over for the apartments and not have the walking around identity. We'll get to the consensus as we get to other, other council members' points or if you'd like to, again, raise anything that wants, you want to be tested by the staff. We're not making final decisions here. We're, I see Councilmember Millhaven.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank staff for the great work. I did get to attend, as you mentioned, we all did, the great work that you did. It's very complicated material and things that people feel passionate about. I think you did a nice job simplifying it so people would understand. I'm also grateful for the, the great work that you're doing. We've talked a lot, folks here. We've talked a lot, folks here talked during campaigns about listening to citizens and doing citizen outreach, and we heard presentations at one of our last meetings about all the efforts we're doing to make sure that we're hearing from adequate representation of our community. So, thank you for continuing to look for ways to reach out and take it to the people and, and see what they think. So I'm very supportive and grateful for the great work you've done. I do think we need to keep in mind, as one of the speakers said, we've heard from less than 200 people. So, if there's been a lot of aggravation, it sounds like it's about 200 out of 240,000 people, so, sorry, I couldn't help myself. But I would like to point out to my colleagues that we're agendized tonight to talk about the presentation and discuss, it's presentation and discussion on public outreach. So, I think we all are pretty well aware of what each other's philosophical positions are on development and redevelopment, and so I'd hope that folks could contain their comments to commenting on the public outreach process, and perhaps a few things, as a mayor suggested, they'd like to test in that public outreach. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Janik.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I think this is, what the mayor's presented are some good guidelines that we do need to test with the public. I know I attended one of the meetings, and I think the comment I heard about the bonus heights and whatnot is limited bonus height. There's still flexibility, but 150 feet is pretty darn tall. And I know there's been a lot of comments about, well, a lot of people want to move to Scottsdale, we need to meet that demand. If we meet the demand of everybody that wants to move here, we won't be Scottsdale anymore. So we need to be careful that we keep our character and what Scottsdale means, and we need to make sure we keep our tourists coming here, because that's what keeps our amenities high and our taxes low. So I think that we can come up with a good compromise. I definitely agree that with the apartments that we're going to be building and have built, that we need to make sure we do keep that commercial element. I know it's been hurt because of COVID, I get that, and everybody went online, but when you start bringing in more people, I think you do need to be mindful that you need a, a balance, and I think 20% is a good number to look at to start with. The other thing I think we need to be realistic about is fees for bonus height. I think they need to be increased, probably double, because when you get that bonus height, you give tremendous advantage to the developer, which is fine, but then the city has to provide all the services that that additional component adds. So I think we, I would like to do, get some information on what other cities do when it comes to bonuses, and how they charge for bonus height. And what Marilyn Atkinson said, I agree with that as well. I think we need to have a better definition of, okay, so this is your bonus, but what are the trade-offs? What does the city get back for that? And make it a little more equitable. And there's a lot of ways to go on that, so I think, I would like to see a little bit more work on that. And then I guess my last comment would be on transitions. We had exceptions upon exceptions. You can't have a 1 next to a 3 and have the designated step-ups and setbacks that we all agreed we needed. So all of a sudden, you're getting your bonus height, and now we're saying, oh, now you don't have to have that setback. And if there's one thing that really bothers me, it's when the setbacks are reduced, because I feel like I'm in a tunnel. And that's not what Scottsdale is about. Scottsdale is about views, it's about open spaces, it's about our wonderful weather, but we all have to work together to make sure that we keep that, and we don't lose it, or we lose our identity. And then I'm afraid we might lose our tourism. So those are my basic comments. Thank you.
Councilwoman Whitehead, discussion on what we'd like tested in the community, relevant?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we did get a lot of comments, I would say it's more than 200. And also, I think when people comment, it's, it reflects many other people's views, but I mean, it's a testament to who we are as a city. Most cities, I don't think, get near as much engagement from their community. We all love Scottsdale. Also, what I hear when I'm in the community is a lot of agreement. We tend to focus on what we disagree on. So I think that's a, an area, an opportunity, and I encourage people to cross mingle and find those areas of agreement, because the more we get done together, the more that we agree on and get done, the more we celebrate, the more common ground we're going to find. So, just generally, you know, at this point, the constituents, and I agree, we want some more specificity than what we had in this first part of the process. I also want to thank staff, those, those were incredible sessions, and it was amazing that citizens sat there for however many hours, that was amazing. So, what, we have to really focus on what we are and be the best at that, and not try to be something we're not. So we are a world-class destination, no matter where you are in the world, people have heard of Scottsdale. We are not a major employment center, we're just not. And the attempts that we've made at doing that, we've ended up with a lot of call centers. But we are a boutique office, office center, we are a tourist destination, and we are an incredibly cool city to live in. So that is where we really need to focus, more, you know, less is more. So I think that we have a lot of tall buildings in the pipeline. I listened to the 2018 Character Area Plan meeting three times. What was said and what ended up in the plan don't match, and this is our opportunity to fix it. So what are some of the areas that really need to be fixed? Obviously, we've had pretty much a record number of approvals of development projects, but we don't, we're not certainly fleshing cash to fix, to upkeep our city. Our city is not the sparkling destination it should be. So we really have to prioritize upkeep and investment in the city, and there are a number of ways to do that. We have to, we have to have a tree plan, we need to fix our alleys, we need to have, I would like to see a discussion on reinstating the grants for business owners to fix up their storefronts, cracked sidewalks, we need to, to fix up signage. And then we need to talk about changes in, that were mentioned in 2018 but never made, made it into this plan. So, public open space, that is something that unites us. We need to formalize that. That was a big discussion point, that's what made the waterfront so successful. It was a height-for-open-space deal. So they got height, we got open space. So I would like to recommend some, to recommend that the bonus includes a 10% public open space commitment. We've done that with a lot of projects that have been approved, and they're very successful, and it makes the entire city more valuable. The, I, I agree that we need to reevaluate the bonus heights, it was awkward, we, it seemed there were some mistakes, we need to correct that. Again, I think lower heights, we've got a lot of tall buildings in the works, you know, we're not going to be the employment center, but we also don't want the most hotel rooms, we want the best hotel rooms. And I really worry about cannibalizing our current tourism industry, our wonderful historic hotels. So again, I think we need to relook at that. I agree with the mayor on his PBD comment, and I believe Councilwoman Janik, that what attracts tourists aren't just apartments, we need those valuable commercial spaces at the base of apartments. So I think that's a great change. I would like to see a Old Town Stakeholder Group re-brought back. Previously, there was a stakeholder group that met monthly, and that way, even before something gets onto a council agenda, stakeholders are talking about it and, and figuring out what works for you all before you come to city council. And staff, I know, is willing to do that, host these stakeholder groups. I would like to see public art, the 1%, perhaps we need to broaden that, I've gotten a lot of feedback on that, where it can be used for other things. One gentleman mentioned affordable housing, there might be some other uses for that 1% art fee, and that fee also, which wasn't done, we need to make that public art publicly accessible, if it's going to be approved. Those were some of my comments. I think what makes us valuable is the fact that we're unique, we're Scottsdale, we're not Tempe, we're not Phoenix. It helps the region, and it helps us stay economically viable. So I think just let's focus on the many areas we agree on and get some stuff done, and also make our city the sparkling destination that I think is in our minds' eye. We have some real work to do, and it's going to take public and private partnerships to get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Durham, and then Councilwoman Littlefield.
Thank you. I, I think in the report you provided, and in my experience at the meetings, I think that there was some ambivalence towards the current bonus system. The tables I sat at thought the present heights were fine, but did not like the bonus system. And I think when we review the bonus system, we definitely need to restrict bonuses to items that have a greater public benefit. In the past, we've given bonuses for trashcans and crosswalks and some other things, which I, I thought were not significant enough or important enough to, to justify a bonus. So I'd be interested in trying to poll people to figure out what is a good bonus. I think open space would obviously be very high on that, a contribution to open space, contribution to pedestrian walkways. Councilmember Whitehead mentioned the grants for businesses to redo their facades. So I, I think all those are, are good ideas. I would like us to see, try to create a list of benefits that we think would be worth a bonus, and I, I think that list, the bonus system hasn't worked well, I don't, I don't think it has over the last few years. I think on the Kemsey, we did have quite a good bonus in the terms of saving the Triangle Building, and I thought that was a good example of how it ought to work, but I don't think that example's been followed for the most part. So I would like to, for us to test out various ideas on what would be worth granting a bonus, what are the types of improvements we'd like to see that would be worthwhile in granting bonus height or density, assuming that we even keep a bonus system, which we may decide not to, but I, I'd like to see a rating or a ranking of possible amenities that would be part of a bonus system. Thank you.
Very good. We have Councilwoman Littlefield, Vice Mayor Kapoudi.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with a lot of what all of my colleagues have said, I agree with what the mayor said that we need to look at, and basically, the parts of the discussions that have come up are interesting, I think they need to be looked at. I'd also like to thank staff for the work that you've done, you've done a tremendous job. Thank you. I don't, one of the things that I was looking at as I looked through this entire thing is, first off, this review of the Old Town Character Plan should not be used to modify or lower in any way the quality of construction that's done either in downtown or Old Town, nor should it be used to modify or lower the ambiance of our Old Town Western theme. So those are things that should, I think, be on the top of the list. As for the suggestion that we allow flexibility in the plan, that needs definition. What are we talking about when we're saying flexibility? It should be defined more clearly, because flexibility in and of itself could be just about anything. It should not mean that we relax our standards in any way. Vertical development, tall development, also needs better definition, they've all talked about here, so I'll let that go, but it should, the bonuses, the higher heights should only be used to satisfy community need, not just the need of a developer to make more money. So there has to be a community requirement need that's being fulfilled if we're going to do any kind of heights. I don't think personally that PUD designation should be a part of Old Town or part of the Old Town Plan. We need stronger definitions of bonuses, as was presented by Tom, how people can qualify for them, and how and where they can be used. Bonuses may not be appropriate in all locations, so that's something that we need to talk about. I would like to remove further areas from a type 1 designation from the Old Town area. We don't want to destroy that ambiance that we have of Old Town as the west-most western town. That's what many of our tourists come here to see, they want to enjoy that, and if we destroy it and make it just a downtown like any other downtown, like Phoenix, tourists will simply go somewhere else where they can enjoy what they want to see. And there will be nothing different or unique or special for them to see here if we get rid of what we are or what we have. I'm sure that you've seen the video of the lady tourist who comes to enjoy Old Town ambiance because her Old Town was destroyed by high-rise development. That can happen here, and that should be a number-one concern that we have, to not let it happen. We need to preserve our special character, and we need, and we need to do that, at least to start by limiting height. Don't need to all become cowboys and run around in hats and, and wave guns in the air, but we need to maintain the look and the feel of Old Town. And western Old Towns were not high, so I'm talking about Old Town here. About closing the streets, which was something that was discussed earlier, especially Scottsdale Road, we've been there, we've done that, and it simply does not work. It drove people away from the brick-and-mortar shops and, and the stores in Old Town and Downtown, and it would do the same thing again if we did it again. Definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. You'll get the same result. Our city is long and narrow, and it was designed for the automobile, for travel and traffic. It's how people in Scottsdale want to get around. Our job up here is not to determine what people should want in, in the way of travel and enforce it. Our job is providing the infrastructure necessary to accommodate our visitors and our residents so that they can come and feel welcome here, wherever in Scottsdale they want to go. Height and density have a big place in that. Also, we need to do it by having open roads and adequate parking, and that's something we've addressed, we probably need to continue to address. I do support several ideas that I read in my emails from the citizens and the residents of Old Town and Downtown. We need to clean up the alleys throughout the area. And then we need to establish a city schedule for regular maintenance of that cleanup in order to keep them clean. A one-time brush-through is not going to help for a long period of time, so we need to maintain that. Several of the sidewalks could use a resurfacing and a re-smoothing over for safer walking so people don't trip or fall on the bikes or scooters or whatever. So that's something that we can look at, basic maintenance and upkeep. Also, we should plant more trees, I, I agree with Salon Whitehead, Councilwoman Whitehead, trees, shrubs, and flowers in public area add a lot of pizzazz to the area, people like that. They add color and they add beauty. We should also need to establish regular watering schedules, if we, if we plant them, we need to keep them alive. Dead plants don't do anything for us. We can intertwine lighting through them as well, through the shrubs, through the trees, through the, the walkways, perhaps seasonal lighted colors to attract seasonal visitors. Also, much of the old Downtown would be more attractive and appealing at night with better lighting. I went through it the other night with my husband, it is dark, and it is not appealing or inviting. We need to lighten it, we need to make it so people want to go through. Perhaps interlacing throughout the trees and the shrubs. Right now, it's too dark to be appealing, and again, maintenance and schedules would have to be set up on an ongoing basis to make sure that the light bulbs are still shining and that all of this is still working. These are not expensive particularly, they cost, but they're not tremendously expensive, but I think they would add a great deal to our Downtown and to our Old Town both. But I think they would add a great deal to our Downtown and to our Old Town both. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Kapooti and then Councilwoman Whitehead.
Thank you, Mayor. So great that we're seven such different people up here. It always amazes me. I think that the fact that Scottsdale is special and needs to stay special is never in dispute. I just want to put that out there to begin with. We all want Scottsdale to be special. We just have different ways of getting there. Councilwoman Millhaven, I'm sorry, I can't keep this as short as you would like me to. I do have several things I'd like to say, but I'll keep it in mind. We seem to be pushing forward with ideas that interfere with the free market and with private property rights, and we are opening up the city to expensive lawsuits. The state legislature is punishing cities for restrictions that add to construction costs and drive up housing prices.
Excuse me, Vice Mayor. We're not going to talk about legal issues, and that's not a part of this discussion, nor any legislation that may change in the interim. So we're looking at specificity regarding the Old Town Character Area Plan so that staff can have some direction in this matter. Legal can provide any responses to your concerns, but that's not the topic.
But you're talking about changing the zoning. You just called out some very specific zoning changes in our Old Town.
I don't, I don't think I could be more clear. We're not changing the zoning at this time. We are not actually legislating a change. We are testing the difference between the character plan and flaws or otherwise that are involved in that.
And Downtown zoning coordinates update.
So I don't want to get into that other area of your concern. You could take it up with legal, and that can be discussed at some point.
City Attorney.
Out of chamber.
Am I not allowed to talk about it?
Again, it's my understanding, what is posted, we have to stay on the subject. And the subject is not legal opinion regarding legislation, legislature, or threats of lawsuits or, as you just mentioned. I want to be real clear about that because we have to stay on track so that we can continue to process in an orderly way.
Okay.
I'd like to make a point of order to allow, so point of order and the rules of procedure would require a vote of the council to allow Councilwoman Kapooti to continue her remarks. So I make, I'd like to make a point of order.
Well, we are not voting in this session, so you are asking for a vote, and that's not possible.
Council rules of procedure include...
Excuse me. All we're doing is giving our consensus on the topic so that it can be tested, not voting on anything. So it's not actually proper to vote on a point of order. So that's my interpretation, and I rule on that. We are not entitled to vote on any matter in this work study. I appreciate the comment, and I say if you have concerns, you can check with the city attorney in a proper time and a separate forum.
I'm sorry. The rules of procedure allow for a council member to call for a point of order, and then in disagreement with the presiding chair's decision about the proceeding, and then the council can vote as to whether or not to uphold the chair's decision to shut down that discussion, to say it's inappropriate, or to allow the discussion, to allow Councilwoman Kapooti to continue.
You don't need a second.
So according to our rules of procedure, I would like a vote to allow Councilwoman Kapooti to continue her comments.
I thank you for that comment. Our Rules of Procedure 10.6 state that the chair grants the speaker, any one of us members, a speaking point, provided that they stick to the subject. And this subject is far off from what is on the table. So that's why I am ruling that it is not proper or in order to discuss legislative matters, outside lawsuits or such. I will ask the city attorney, again, perhaps you could weigh in on this.
Thank you, Mayor. To clarify, your Rules of Procedure, you are correct. Rule 10.7 and 10.6 do provide the presiding officer with the ability to ask another council member to confine his or her remarks to the issue under debate and to refrain from all personal attacks or indecorious language. Just reading you the whole rule for appropriate context. It provides, in Rule 2.9, "A council member once recognized shall not be interrupted unless called to order by the presiding officer or unless a point of order or point of privilege is raised by another council member." So I believe you called Vice Mayor Kapooti to order when interrupting her, and now you have a point of order that has also been stated on the record by Councilwoman Millhaven. The rules provide that once a point of order is raised by a member of the council, when there is a disturbance, a lack of decorum, or to raise a question of whether there has been a breach of the council rules, that it does not require a second and is not debatable, is not amendable, and cannot be reconsidered. Once raised, a point of order requires a ruling by the presiding officer and, if held to be in order, enforcement by order of the presiding officer. However, if that ruling is decided, is thought to be wrong by a member of the council, the presiding officer may be challenged by an appeal from any member of the council. If the presiding officer fails to act, any member may move to require the presiding officer to enforce decorum. An affirmative vote of the majority of the council shall require the presiding officer to act. So the short answer, Mayor, I think you were correct in your interpretation, but Councilwoman Millhaven was also correct that if she wanted to challenge your decision, she could put it to the vote of the council.
Thank you for clarifying that. Then to uphold the, we will have a vote. To uphold my decision that this is not appropriate as I have detailed, all those in favor say aye to uphold the chair.
I'm sorry, I'm confused about what I'm voting.
No one can speak as far as the point of order. Okay. It appears as though there's two that are, the vote is to uphold the chair in my adjudication as I have stated. And we have no, so that means that we will, Mr. Durham, so you vote no, and therefore Kapooti, Vice Mayor Kapooti can continue with her discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Changing the zoning requirements is going to trigger Prop 207 lawsuits. This will be from our local business owners, not from out-of-town companies. We saw this when we were considering making that desert rural category in the general plan, and we all backed away. So changing the Character Area Plan is going to be even more serious. Zoning, unlike the general plan, is not aspirational. The city of Flagstaff recently tried to place restrictions on density and was immediately hit with $51 million in Prop 207 claims from local landowners. We can't reduce the rights of owners to use their property. This reduces the fair market value and violates the law. And limiting height and density, mandating a certain amount of commercial or open space is going to decrease the market value, leading to lawsuits. That's why it's applicable, and I'll move on now. It also doesn't work. The city of Phoenix tried to mandate commercial space in residential buildings along the Light Rail route. There's now empty retail everywhere along that route. We need more people living and walking downtown to sustain this model. No one's going to drive downtown into the first floor of a residential building and shop in a flower shop or go to the dry cleaners. We would need to build way more residential for that model to work. Commercial requires tenants. There is no market for additional retail right now, so we can want to have it, but we can't make it happen. The city of Peoria just came to this exact same conclusion along Grand Avenue. We can have zoning that calls for these things, as the mayor suggests, but if there's no market, no one's going to build it. Area plans need to be based on reality. Subjective opinions cannot rule over market conditions. This idea would simply just kill economic development downtown. I do agree with Councilwoman Millhaven. We're not following our own process. Why are we getting into these weeds tonight? We haven't finished with citizen input. We've had extremely low participation, and we need to continue the outreach. What I heard at the meetings I attended, which were almost all of them, was mostly positive. People seemed to be saying we should preserve historic Old Town in our core but remain flexible with the downtown development. We certainly need to be more sensitive with transitions. Maybe instead of getting rid of 2.5, we need a 1.5. We need to have transition, definitely better transitions rather than just going from a 1 to a 3. I agree with that. And we also need to seek public benefits. I certainly agree with that as well. But our current Character Area Plan has been 35 years in the making. We've had extensive community outreach. It's been regularly updated, community-based, it's flexible, and it was just updated in 2018. So why would we reverse course now, just as our Downtown is starting to get a little bit of vibrancy back? The Downtown is a growth area, as we all know. It's a primary economic engine for our city. It pays for a lot of our city amenities, and it allows for us to have less density in other parts of our city. We need to have a critical mass of people living in our Downtown, working and playing in order for it to be a vibrant, year-round venue for tourists and residents. This is what we all said we wanted in our general plan. Reversing direction now is going to have the opposite effect. Other cities are very happy to take our business if we send it away, and they are already doing it. Our job on council is to look long-term at what's best for the city. Our Downtown resorts and businesses need people all year long, not just seasonal tourists. The Downtown needs energy and revitalization. Successful cities do not stagnate. We can't establish so many hurdles that no one's going to invest here. That is a recipe for blight, as we're starting to see in our Downtown. We can't ask investors to build the highest of quality, which we all agree we want, keep them low, setback, step-back, provide more parking, 20% commercial, a certain amount of open space. It's just not economically feasible. We're going to be left with nothing but abandoned lots and rundown buildings, which, again, we're starting to see in our Old Town area, and lawsuits. So this is a work-study session. I appreciate that, and I certainly look forward to hearing more from all of us who are impacted as we continue with the process. So let's keep moving forward. We definitely need to hear from more than 100 people. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Whitehead.
Thank you, Mayor. I think my colleagues' comments are exactly why we have to have these discussions. We don't need to enter into lawsuits. There certainly was no mention on my part of changing any zoning. I'm not aware of any attempts to change zoning. What we're trying to do is clean up the Character Area Plan, which is only a few years old. It was approved in 2018, to make sure we do what was verbally said in order to make our city the most valuable it can be. And so there's no attempt here to change zoning, but there is an attempt to find the common ground and to get more done and to actually do what we had envisioned verbally. And so some of those examples are, well, and I want to talk about the blight. That's a big problem. That blight was part of this entire 10 years of projects being approved and developers not building those projects. So the blight preceded any efforts to clean up Downtown, preceded this council. What we're trying to do is incentivize to make it easy for the right kinds of developers to build in the city and create valuable value for more residents, create value for the tourists that have always funded our city, and create value for those landowners who want to make an investment in their properties without going necessarily 150 feet high. The idea that we can't ask for setbacks and step-backs, we can't ask for lower heights, we can't ask for open space, we can't ask for trees and expect to get it, that is false. That is simply false. We have asked for it, and the projects I'm the proudest of, I've taken heat from both sides, but they are the projects that have incorporate that which we believe Scottsdale deserves. And do we get every developer? No, we don't. But do we get the best developers? Yes, we do. And so what we're trying to do is create a Character Area Plan that, first of all, unites us and doesn't create lawsuits and brings value to the jewelry store owner who's in a one-story building but allows another property owner to put apartments on top of his building and has some new hotels but doesn't put out the existing hotels. We want a balance. So this is a discussion. This isn't about a lawsuit. Our legal team is going to keep this council in order. We are trying, and yes, we can't ever anticipate what the legislature would do, but what I'm asking from all of you is just to keep working with each other. Again, cross-talk to each other because the best debate is the foundation of our country. Because I don't have the best idea, and neither does my colleague, but when we all talk about our concerns and our priorities, that's where we get the best path forward. 2018, that was done. The Character Area Plan, we have an opportunity to improve it. We don't have an opportunity to go back in time. That is not possible, as far as I know. We have the opportunity to go forward and to go forward together in a way that keeps our Scottsdale the absolute international destination and also the great city to live in and enriches our business owners that choose to work there because that's part of our economy. So thank you.
Okay. The, I think the point I want to make is, you know, being a designer, an architect involved in the evolution of Downtown and Old Town for the last 40 years, the advantage that we have today is that we have a general plan that was approved. The disadvantage, or the gaps, that happened between 2001 and the failure of 2000, the general plan of 2010, left a big gap of either credibility or input of the citizen. Right now, we have a very strong tourism element that was not in the general plan 20 years ago. We have a sustainability. These are voter-approved, digested, and reprocessed, and they matter. So that gives us an advantage today to say these are the values that we're marching forward with. Is the, were the decisions before you had a general plan and had a patchwork, were they as valid or were they as legitimate? I'm not answering that question, but I am answering the question that we have now a general plan that gives it more meaning and a capability to do it. I'd like to just look at a roundup of where we are going as a consensus so staff can get some direction. Councilwoman Janik.
Thank you, Mayor. It's obvious we have a diversity of opinions up here, and I think we all walked in expecting that. My problem is that I want to talk about it more like Councilwoman Whitehead said, and I want to try to get consensus from the community. We're kind of split, kind of want to bring it all together. I want thoughtful growth. These, most of these things we talked about when we talk about height, I think we need to bring a lot of people in and say, well, what do you think? Is it 40 feet? Is it 66 feet for Type 3? Should we go up to 150 feet? Maybe find an average between the two? And what about plan development? How much commercial does, seems reasonable and responsive? So, and I don't like to do it with the threat of illegal action over our head. We will deal with that, trust me. Our legal team will keep us in line. But until we get to that point, I want open discussion on all the ideas that have been presented tonight. And I think this is a very good first step, working towards that. And there's one other item I wanted to bring up that's kind of minor, but it's also kind of major. I think we need to be thinking about the Rose Garden being a park, and I think that maybe one of the bonuses could be that the funding from the bonus can go to have the Rose Garden. Wouldn't that be nice to have a nice park along our canal banks? So a lot of food for thought here. And again, by discussing it and continuing to discuss it and encouraging others to get involved, I think we can come up with a very workable... involved, I think we can come up with a very workable solution that will satisfy the needs for, we need more apartments as well as keeping our identity. So I think everybody has given really nice input. Thank you.
Councilwoman Littlefield, and then Councilwoman Whitehead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It was my understanding tonight that we're supposed to just give input on things that we believe would help the process along as we move forward, as we get more citizen input, which I agree we need. I'd like to see, you know, 1,000, 2,000 more people who come and show an interest and want to participate in how we move forward with our Old Town and our downtown area. I don't think the decisions tonight are being made to, what are we going to do? We're going to do step 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and this is what we're going to end up with. That's not what we're here for. What we're here for is to give input to the staff so they know where we are and we know where they are, and so that we can work together to move forward and get a better consensus of everything that we want to do. Could we walk into something that has a negative impact? Yes. And we could, unknowingly and unwillingly. That happens. Laws are very complex and complicated these days. That's what we have a city attorney there to keep us on the straight and narrow and not let us fall into those pits. And she would do that. And so we need to make sure that we don't have those kinds of problems and considerations. I don't want to see a wall-to-wall, 150-foot-tall building going across Old Town Downtown. That, to me, would destroy it. Who would want to go see that? You can see that anywhere. How can we keep our special, unique character of who and what we are moving forward and keep our vital character sustainability of the area at the same time? Do we need to have hotels for people to stay in so they can go and visit all of our neat stuff down there? Of course we do. And we are approving some of those hotels, and they have been approved. You know, what are we looking for in the way of commercial development in our Old Town? Well, to me, just my opinion, commercial development in Old Town ought to reflect some of the character that they're in, you know? We don't want to have things that have absolutely no bearing whatsoever on the location. You know, can it be commercial? Can it be, you know, arts, crafts, food, all that kind of stuff? Of course. It can be all kinds of things. So what are some of the ideas that our citizens say, you know, we really like this, but we need to have more of that? That's what I'm looking for. I want to see the results of what our citizens are telling us they want to see in their downtown. I don't want to have to have just streets and roads and high-rise apartments. We can have a combination of all of that and make it work out for us. Do I want to see a lot of apartments in downtown? Not necessarily. How about some condos? What is the mix? How about people living there? So we need to have a discussion on all these different possibilities that can blend together to make a unified whole that is more Scottsdale and more unique so that people will be attracted to come. And that's what I'm trying to get to. The things I have said are things that we can do, you know, like the lights and the cleanup and all of that stuff. Not expensive, but it would make a big difference on what people see and what they take home with them after they've been here to say, do I want to come back? Well, yeah, if we make it really nice, they will. So that's what I think is the purpose of tonight and the other planning meetings that we're going to be having going forward, to change our character and to modify and to improve what we are and where we want to go. And so we have an idea of, you know, we are going to know when we get there if we don't know where it is we want to be. And that's the point that we have to get. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Whitehead, and then Vice Mayor Kapooti again.
Okay, just some comments to staff because I... We did get more in-depth about the vision. Can you put in some ideas or include some specificity on the alley, the idea of cleaning up our alleys? Thank you, Councilwoman Janik, for remembering the Canal Side Park. That's, you know, open space, again, was discussed forever in the 2018 city council meeting. So let's get some concrete, open space, and the Canal Side Park is a city property. So... And if we can identify funding, that is helpful from development, as Vice Mayor Kapooti mentioned. So Canal Side Park, Emerald Necklace, if we can have some specificity on the Emerald Necklace. I know there was an effort to identify, and for those who don't know, that is a connectivity, a path, a shady, nice, interesting path system for pedestrians throughout downtown. And then to Vice Mayor Kapooti's comments about the commercial vacant, commercial properties, is there some guidance you can provide council on? We know we want some commercial down below. What are other cities doing that have been successful? What percentage? The mayor mentioned 20%. We want to be successful, right? That's what we're looking for. So some guidance there as we go back to the... Because the residents who come to our meetings, they won't know, so they'll need some guidance on what works and what doesn't work. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Kapooti, and then Councilmember Durham.
Just very short. We can't have wall-to-wall, 150-foot buildings in our downtown. There's a few very specific areas that can be built up, can be built up to that height. And that... Everything I heard in the outreach meetings that I attended was all about how people enjoy having flexibility, and I just want to remind us all that that is the one great thing about our existing plan. It does allow us to have flexibility. We can get all of these great things that we've been talking about up here, some open space and some different amenities for the city. It's the flexibility that allows us to get that. And again, there's some very specific spots in our downtown area where you're allowed to ask for the increased height. We would never have a city full of 150-foot buildings. It just isn't in our plan or in our general plan or in any of our visions, so I just want to lay that record straight. It's all about maintaining flexibility, not making things so rigid that we can't go anywhere, that we can't get great things for the city, but that we maintain our ability to negotiate and flex as we move forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Durham.
Thank you, Mayor. One more thing on the list for the planners. Councilmember Whitehead reminded me of it and what she just said. We've often talked about activating the alleys for use as dining areas or possibly other activities, music, et cetera. So think about the possibility of cleaning up first, but then trying to use alleys as spots for music, entertainment, dining, so forth.
Well, it looks like we have come to the conclusion of the work study. Thank you, everyone, one and all. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Register your vote. We are adjourned. Thank you. See you tomorrow.